I'd like to call the Smithfield Town Council meeting to order Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. Regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. There were no votes taken in executive session. We'll have the prayer. Dear Lord, help us to approach this meeting with a humble heart, open to hearing and learning from one to another. Let your Spirit guide us through discussions. We can all come together and make the decisions that need to be made. Based on our own understanding, but on your wisdom and guidance, amen. So look to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emergency evacuation and health notification.
Any event, there's an emergency in the town council chambers has to be evacuated. There's two exits, one to my right, a city exit sign that leads downstairs to the side of the building. The other exit is in the rear of the town council chambers. When you go through that exit door, the stairwell to your right leads you to the front of the building. Do not use the elevator in event of an emergency. Ladies room and men's room. If you go to the rear exit of the council chambers, men's room is on the right, ladies room is upstairs on the left.
Thank you, Chief. There is no presentation tonight. Minutes, number six. Who demands the February 11th, 2025 work session meeting to be approved as recorded? I'll entertain a motion. You have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item B, move the minutes to the February 18th, 2025, executive session meetings pursuant to the Rhode Island General Law Section 42465A1. Person out to interview Brandon Riley, Tina Alexander, Gary Alexander, Pamela Palumbo, William Phillips, Mike Nima, for possible appointments to town board a commission in Section 42465A5. Real estate potential acquisition or lease of real property to be approved as recorded and sealed. I'll entertain a motion. You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item C, move the minutes to February 18th, 2025, a possession meeting and approved as recorded. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item number seven, consider discuss act upon the following possible appointments to reappointments. Traffic Safety Commission appointment for a term life. I'll entertain a motion.
Smithfield Town Council, your direct points might be able to serve on a traffic safety commission for a life.
You have a second. Any discussion?
Why do we have life terms? Why does it say life terms here? Do we have life terms? Like you serve on it until you die?
No, no. It's until they leave or that's that wording is on in that language.
The onboard program?
Yeah, that's the word. Yeah, that's.
We don't have a workaround for that. That's actually done behind the scenes when someone is appointed for a life term. I mean, I can try to get it changed.
Right, but we.
The term on his.
The motion should be correct.
But we are deciding here what the actual term should be. Do we have terms for the traffic safety?
Traffic safety is upon appointment unless somebody resigns. It's always been somebody resigns since I've been here anyways.
Should be a term.
We should have a term for them.
We're gonna see if Lynn can change it. If she can't change it, then we'll make.
I mean, I'd like to do the appointment, but.
Well, it's up to us to change, correct? Not Lynn.
Well, you would make the decision, but then I would have to have them look at it via that program.
Right.
What is the, I believe if I recall, on that particular commission, it's appointment until you, until you leave the commission. It's been traditionally.
Well, if we wanted to change it, how would we do that? Would it be by?
Is it ordinance or charter? I'd have to look it up.
I'd have to look and see whether or not it was created. I don't, I don't think that commission is in the charter. It's probably by way of ordinance or internally. Is that something that the?
Perhaps we could do it by resolution.
Right.
Well, if you want to make it per charter or handle ordinance, and then we'll follow what it is, and then we should look at updating if it needs to be.
That's fine.
That's, that's fine.
Do you have to redo this for a term, the charter handle ordinance, term requirement?
To be continued? I mean, to be determined?
Well, if you put either or, whatever, where it is, we can just follow that.
So the appointment would be for a term consistent with the charter or ordinance?
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Public hearings. Continue a public hearing to consider discuss to act upon zoning ordinance amendments in Article Nine, special districts to add Section 9.5 entitled Davis Liquid Waste Superfund Site Groundwater Protection Overlay District. I'll declare this public hearing open.
Good evening, members of the council. I am once again Joe Carnavale. I represent Fishing Bear Properties, owner of 512 lot road assessors plat 50 lot 29. This is that 152 acre parcel running on the western edge of the proposed overlay district. When I appeared before you with my client last month, we had asked for and were granted some additional time on before this ordinance was, you know, passed by the council because we were going to solicit the EPA for some guidance on whether a portion on the west side of that quarry on the map on my client's parcel could be excluded potentially from the overlay district without having any ramifications on the plume and what have you. Turns out with everything going on in Washington, it is very difficult to get a response from anybody at the EPA over the past couple of weeks. I did receive a friendly tip earlier today to contact Joe Bliss, Joe Bis, I'm sorry, at ESH Solutions or EHS Solutions, I believe it is. So I did speak with him. He did give me some, some information that I can potentially chase down with Rhode Island DEM to see if we can get some approvals. So I'm simply here asking for consideration of one final continuance so that we may do that. And that's at the discretion of the council, and I have nothing else to add to that unless there are any specific questions from the council to me.
Chief?
Yes, I mean, and a solicitor and I have been in touch with, they've been very open with us and keeping us up to date on what they're working on. So I think, you know, to give them extra time as appropriate as they work through the details.
Is it, is it appropriate to put it on the March 18th or you want to go to April?
I do have a specific name of somebody that I can actually get in touch with at DEM, I believe, according to what Mr. Bis relayed to me. So to be enthusiastic, March 18th could potentially work, but would be safer to go to April. But if the council can't go that far, then I understand. I'll take what we can get at this point.
So why are us to be safe? And we'll give you the first meeting in April. Is that acceptable?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any discussion from the council?
Who, Chief, you in touch with? Were you in touch with EPA or were you in touch with?
No, he's been in touch with us and keeping us up to date on what they're working on.
I see.
So he's been, he's met with both the solicitor and I on, on a Zoom call just to keep us up to date on their progress. So they've been trying to get answers and work on this, but it has been slow going, I know.
What, what attempts have you made to obtain answers from the EPA?
I'm sorry?
What attempts have you made to obtain answers from the EPA?
I've sent three separate letters and two emails to Darrell Luce, Karen McGuire, and Brian Olson. Those were the individuals that I thought best to contact as they were the ones who initially were signatories on the comfort letter that was issued to Fishing Bear back in 2021. I did get a bounce back undeliverable as it relates to Ms. McGuire. So I don't believe she is there present day, but that was the best I had to go on at this point.
I think Darrell Luce is, Luce is not, I don't know if he's still the contact person for the EPA. I see, Joe Bis would know.
Yeah, and Joe Bis, he had told me today, he gave me a couple of names at DEM that he thought would be better to talk with directly as opposed to the EPA, especially in light of what's going on there.
So you did speak to Mr. Bis?
I spoke with Mr. Bis.
Directly?
Directly this afternoon, yes.
Okay, so we'll keep the public hearing open until the first meeting in April.
Thank you very much.
Any discussion from the council? Hearing?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue to the first meeting in April.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Schedule a public hearing, March 18th, 2025, for the submission of the town of Smithfield's 2024 R.I.D. Stormwater Report to R.I.D.E.M. Entertain a motion.
We already scheduled this at a prior meeting, the last meeting, didn't we?
So to answer, Josh Jelly, town engineer for Smithfield, to answer your question that you just had, we had to do a public notice. And if we didn't receive up to 25 comments, then we could bypass that and just have you guys submit your approval. And so it was, tonight was supposed to be.
So we're supposed to be canceling the public hearing, not scheduling it? Is that, is that what you're saying?
So tonight was supposed to be like a duel. It was supposed to be if we received 25 public comments, then we were going to schedule the public hearing for next town council meeting. And if we didn't receive them, which we did not, then today would be the day that you guys would vote on accepting and moving the packet to.
I think that's further down in the packet though, where we, further down on the agenda, where we vote on, you know, accepting it.
Oh, did I come at the wrong time?
Yeah, it was further down.
So, so why, why is this on the agenda? Is this for the purpose of canceling the public hearing because he didn't get 25 comments? Or why is this on here?
Right. He had, if there was 25 or more comments, the, for the Ripley's report, DEM requires a public hearing. They didn't get, you didn't get any, right? Yeah, they didn't get any comments. So the public hearing by Rhode Island DEM regulations is not required, and it can be accepted by the town council. We would have had to hold the public hearing if we had 25 or more so they could comment.
So what is the motion?
There should be no, no action taken by the council on this.
Motion not passed, no actions viewed.
Thank you. Item C, conduct a public hearing to consider discuss to act upon approving new intoxication beverage license as listed as applied, subject to the compliance of all state regulations, local ordinances, and certification, a good standing from the Division of Taxation. It's number one Cedar Spill Group, DBA Cedar Spill 566, Parton Pike, Unit Four, approved for outdoor bar and service. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on it? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, we're good to go.
Everything's in order.
Motion to approve the annual renewal of Cedar Spill intoxicating beverage license.
You have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Number nine, consider discuss act upon approving renewal of three mobile food truck licenses as listed as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, Hamo LLC, Farm to Sandwich LLC, Wiener Wagon LLC. Everything in order, Lynn? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the renewal of three mobile food truck licenses for Amano Pizza and Gelato, Farm to Sandwich, and Wiener Wagon.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item B, consider discuss to act upon approving the annual renewal of one bingo license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances to Smithfield Senior Center at One William Hawkins Trail. And we're going to wave the fee. So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item C, consider discuss to act approving the annual renewal of a private detective license for Ralph Howe for Hanson Brown Road, Johnson Rowland for his Business Information Connection Unlimited, 400 Parton Pike, Suite 128. Smithfield Rowland is applied and subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. All the paperwork?
Yes, it is.
I'll entertain a motion. So moved. You have a second. All in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item D, consider discuss act upon approving the annual renewal of 12 holiday sales license as listed as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, 7-Eleven, Anthony Polisino Jr., Card Incorporated, Khalib Enterprises, Khalib Enterprises LLC, Dave's Fruitland, Dave's Marketplace, J M Smithfield LLC, James Fine Cigars LLC, Old Navy LLC, Parton Liquor Incorporated, and Quikness Incorporated. Everything in order, Lynn?
Yes, it is.
Any, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the annual renewal of the following 12 holiday sales licenses as listed as applied.
You have a second. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item E, consider discuss to act upon approving two one-day beer and wine licenses for the Smithfield Senior Center, the St. Patrick's Day, and the Spring Sling. Parties will take place at the Smithfield Senior Center in William Hawkins Trail between the hours of 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM as applied, subject to all state regulations and local ordinances. I'll entertain a motion.
Will the Smithfield Town Council approve two one-day beer and wine licenses for St. Patrick's Day, Joseph's Day, five years?
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. It's no business, new business. Consider discuss the act upon accepting the town of Smithfield's 2024 R.I.P.D.E.S. Stormwater Report, authorizing the town manager to submit it to R.I.D.E.M.
That was your chance.
Hello again. Yeah, so the engineering department has stated usually annually they have to submit a report to R.I.D.E.M. And the report basically is in regards to towns' efforts to reducing discharge of pollutants into the storm sewer system. And so we were supposed to have a public hearing if the, there was 25 comments as suggested, but there wasn't. And so unless there's any questions from you guys, I would like to move forward with that.
How many comments did you receive?
Zero.
Zero.
We usually don't receive any from what I understand.
And this was reviewed by Gavin yourself, and I reviewed it as well. Everything seems to be in order for the.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion. Second?
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ayes have it. Item B, consider discuss the act upon adopting a resolution to support the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns for 2025 legislative priorities.
Good evening. Tom Hodgkins, 200, Parton Pike. Is the Smithfield contribution, looks like last year was $11,000 to League of Cities and Towns. Will that be increased this year or will it be 11,000?
No, it's going to be 11,000 again this year.
Okay. The resolution that you have in front of you, did the League of Cities and Towns draft this?
Yeah. Yes, they did.
Okay, it looks identical to the resolution that the council approved last year. Does the league consult the council on policy positions that it takes?
So the league works through all the town managers, mayors, and they meet on a monthly basis, and they, if there's something that needs to come back to the town council, they do. They do, they do send out information that is needed. But the representative of each community is either the mayor, town manager, or town administrator.
There is no representation other than our prior town manager who is an ex officio. Other than that, there's no Smithfield representation on the board.
So the voters of Smithfield have no voice for the positions that the League of Cities and Town takes? Is that correct?
The town managers, mayors, and city and town administrators have a say into what they do. So we do have a voice on, on the board.
But only to the extent that the town council or the town manager serves at the pleasure of the town council, correct?
Correct.
The issue I have here is that the league takes policies, positions, pays lobbyists with money from Smithfield taxpayers to take these policy positions that aren't approved by Smithfield voters. We've been consulted by Smithfield voters, and the league goes to the State House and says, we represent the 39 cities and towns in Rhode Island and taking this position, but the town's not consulted, the council's not consulted. And I think that the, the resolution is missing some bullet points for apparently what are some of the league's priorities. There should be a bullet point here for opposed efforts to make government more transparent. Last year, the league's lobbyist opposed legislation to strengthen the APRA Act, the Access to Public Records Act. There's little opposition to that other than from the governor's appointees in the league. Apparently, the league's reason for opposing that was that transparency can be costly. What's the cost of no transparency? What's the cost of government waste? What's the cost of bridges that get shut down? What's the cost of abuse that people never know about because the league takes these positions to try to limit government transparency? That's not in the interest of Smithfield voters. I don't think it's in the interest of anybody in the state of Rhode Island, but the league takes these positions. This year, I understand that the league is promoting more taxes. It's pushing to eliminate the 4% cap on tax increases to promote large housing developments, to push onto taxpayers, Smithfield taxpayers, bills for additional spending and costs. Why should Smithfield taxpayers pay the league's lobbyists to promote these policies?
Can I just interject something?
Sure.
The only lobbyist that I know that the league has right now is Randy Rossi. They don't have a paid lobbyist.
Who aren't the lobbyists, aren't the, doesn't the league have registered lobbyists who go and testify on its behalf? They're employed by the league.
Randy does, and Randy Amonti did before Randy. There's no paid lobbyists that I'm aware of.
Well, they're on staff. They're registered lobbyists.
No. Randy, Randy and Randy Amonti are the only two that I know of that testify on any legislation for the league.
Well, I, I think if you look at what the testimony was last year, you'll find some other individuals who testified on behalf of the league.
They, they do. They, they, now with the State House, it's different than it used to be. You have to be registered. So the staff in the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns are all registered to speak in front of any of the hearings. But it's, it's the, they're not really lobbyists. They're the staff of the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns.
Well, whether it's the staff or a lobbyist hired by the, by the league or not, it's the towns dues that are going to the league to support this work, to promote, to promote policy positions that really aren't in the interests of, of many, many people. I mean, more tax, eliminate the 4% tax cap to increase taxes every year. We all know what that means. More spending by the state means less people, less money for people to spend at home. More spending by towns means less money for people to spend at home. And these unanticipated tax increases make it difficult for towns to do budgeting. And later this week, on Thursday night, you're going to take up a tax deal for a corporation for 20 years that anticipates a tax increase between 2.2 and 2.3% a year for the next 20 years. And here we have a policy that's seeking to increase taxes more than that every year. The league has also promoted legislation in the past to promote more development. In the past week, the league tweeted support for the speaker's proposition to allow more construction in residential neighborhoods. These are, the league has promoted these, this legislation, which has taken decision making out of the hands of local councils and boards and mandated it by state law. These are bad policies that are promoted by the league. They're being paid for by Smithfield and many other townspeople around the state. And they're not in the interest of the people who are paying for it. I anticipate what the council is going to discuss is they, well, the league takes a number of other positions that are beneficial to us. And I guess you just have to hold your nose and look the other way on some of this stuff. But I think there's a lot of stink here. I think you got to balance that out. Thank you.
Well, I think that points out why I don't like these all encompassing resolutions because there are some things that we really like that the league is doing, you know, especially with respect to unfunded mandates, making sure that, you know, we, we receive our funds for things that the state mandates, receive our education funding, making sure that. And I, and I also think their, their housing policy, you know, in the past has been contradictory. Sometime there, some, some, some places, they're supporting more housing and, and housing bills. And in some areas, they're saying that, you know, we want to have housing and zoning controlled by the municipalities, restore control to the municipalities. So, you know, I think, I think there are good, good things, things I don't agree with. I don't agree with the increase in the lifting of the 4% cap. So how do we vote for a resolution that's so all encompassing if there are things we agree with and, and things we don't? That's my question. And why, why and how did this resolution come, come before us?
If you're going to do that, I'm going to suggest you table it because I read that bill, the 4% cap had a caveat to it that was going to benefit the community. So I think we need to look at exactly what's going on because I didn't read it that way. And, you know, so just one thing to keep in mind, and I agree with you, maybe it doesn't follow everything, but change happens at the State House. And if we don't, all each community push for change at the State House, it's not going to happen. So whether you go through it individually or not, I think it's important, from what I've seen going on at the State House and, and meeting with the governor who meets with us on a regular basis, if we wanted to make change, we need to push it at the State House. And maybe, maybe we support those items that are important to us, but we make sure we get something there so they know we're watching.
I would like to comment that I would share some of the sentiments made by Councilman Ian Adian, Mr. Hodgkins also. I was planning on voting no on this because there are some priorities maybe that I agree with, that there's definitely some that I don't. More importantly, it's not just about me. I think it's what the people of Smithfield would agree with either. And the feedback I'm seeing and observing, I don't think that they would be in favor of this. And just, I thought it was interesting. I was speaking with a member of the Portsmouth Town Council this weekend, and the seven-member council comprised of independents, Democrats, and Republicans, not one person made a motion to accept this, so it died. So just some information.
Yeah, I would like to actually have a chance to read all the bills that, that they're supporting so we know what we're voting for here. So I would think we should, you know, at least postpone this.
What is it, Chief?
I read the pamphlet, but, you know, the pamphlet doesn't give you much.
Well, the actual bills are printed online now. You know, they're on the houses and.
Is there a deadline? Is there a deadline to do this?
No, I don't, I don't think there's a deadline because as you know, the session's going to go right into June. So I don't, I don't think one way or another it's going to make a difference. I just think it's important if there's certain ones you want to support, that it's clear because they, you know, they pay attention to them. A lot of communities start voicing their opinion.
Would it be acceptable to everyone that we put it on the April, first meeting in April agenda?
That's fine.
So somebody make a motion.
What is the purpose of that? I'm sorry. Sorry.
Continue until April, April 4th, just to see.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
April 1st, yeah.
April 1st. April 4th. All's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes, have it. Item D, consider to discuss the act upon, oh, wait a minute, I missed one. C, consider the act discussed upon authorizing a bid for custodial services at the Town Hall Ice Rink, Department of Public Works.
Councilmembers, you, there's a bid sheet that Carlos put in here, and you can see we had 155, we had six bidders, and we're recommending coverall at 835 a month. And we did actually speak to the, after these bids came in, to verify all the services they're going to provide. It's just, actually, it's just a few dollars more than we typically pay. You get 835 for Town Hall, 370 for Municipal Ice Rink, and 310 for Public Works, and I think it's about $20 a month more than we have in paying. So that's the recommendation from myself and a purchasing agent.
Chief, I have a question about the ice rink. I mean, I worked there for 10 years. We never had a cleaning company. The people that worked there did the cleaning. What, what are they doing with a cleaning company over there?
Cleaning company has been there long before my time, so I, I don't know. I, I can't give you that.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I mean, the only option, you, you definitely, you can omit one of them, they are priced separately for each different facility.
We'll work on that. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. President, I approve that the town council award RFP number 24-104 for custodial services for Town Hall, Municipal Ice Rink, and Department of Public Works to the lowest qualified bidder, Coverall, located at 33 College Hill Road in Warwick, Rhode Island. Have a second. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes, have it. Item D, consider the act upon authorizing the fire department into contract with Chief 360 of Georgetown, Delaware for the sole source purchase, replacement of emergency alerting system in the amount of $80,141 to be funded by the Municipal Public Safety Infrastructure Grant. Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Matt Pearson, interim fire chief. So this will update our alerting system we currently have now. It's older than, I've been at the fire station, it's having a hard time getting new parts. So the council will be updated, and then each alerting system in all the stations will be updated as well. So we're already working with Chief 360 on an alerting app that we use, like a mobile app. But the next part with this, anything, any repairs have to be made, they monitor the system for us and let us know that when repairs have to be made. And also the installation, they're allowing us to use local contractors that we use, we use Sully Mack typically for all electrical work in our buildings, so they would just guide Sully Mack in through the installation of all this project, so.
Any questions to the chief?
Is it something that was planned for, or just all of a sudden it's not?
It's been planned for over time, but now it's over time, we're just starting to have a hard time. Like typically, we could use it to open doors remotely for each station for mutually companies coming in. Now we can't even do that. Certain times of the day, it might just not work at all. They're hitting reset a lot on the system, which isn't ideal for what we need to do.
When would it come in?
It should be within the next few months. They're pretty much ready to go. They've, they've already laid out the floor plan for everything, developed the plans, we approved, everything would go. And in fact, they can use some of the, the speaker systems that's been in place that we've kind of slowly been updating over time. So some of the equipment that we have in place, they're able to use to save a little bit of money. And actually, this is probably one of the cheaper systems, I think, as we shopped around, I think it was a couple hundred thousand for a new one, so this one's a little bit cheaper.
Is the station facing a safety issue right now?
No, it's not really a safety issue. I mean, there's other ways, we have plenty of redundancy that, for alerting, but this is probably the better way to do it. And as time goes on, we can upgrade to different little perks that they have, that the program comes with.
Thank you.
Any questions to the chief? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion. Second? Any discussion? Hearing done, all's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes, have it. Number 12, public comment. Hearing done, motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye.